Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Selecting meeting of 25 June 2013. Got a very agenda today. Talk about some financial matters, audits, end-of-year funding transfers, some proposed abatements, also talk about some licensing matters, some committee issues, follow-up actions from town meeting, some organizational matters, performance reviews, goals for the board for next fiscal year. Spend a little time talking about Amass School Board, School Building Authority grant and discussion we had yesterday with them, as well as the school concerning responsibilities and a way ahead. Talk about some of our infrastructure projects. We've got some contract work to do there, provide some status update. Be talking about the dyke restoration, town hall, Phase One renovation, and an ADA compliance hearing. Let me come back to that. Also talk about town hall and the garage project, highway garage roof, center school, and other items. Before we begin, any announcements?
I don't have any.
Is anyone here for community forum? Bob? Why don't you come right over here, Bob? Mr. Bob Bartlett, Planning Board?
I represent, I'm here as a-
Building Inspector?
Builder-
Okay.
Of the, what's known as the Town Hall Garage. And of course, it was constructed using a Leicester pre-engineered building, and Leicester every year asks us to send photos in of buildings and the award, award of excellence plaques for outstanding buildings. And the Leicester folks choose the buildings to award plaques to based on unique design and use of materials and that sort of thing. So I was awarded this plaque at a meeting June 2nd in Albany, and I thought the town would like to have it suitable for frames up on your wall. So I'd like to present this to the-
Excuse me for-
I guess as the-
I don't know how to do it.
Chairman of the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the business.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Good job, Bob.
Thank you.
Now we just need to finish it.
Yeah.
And move in.
What is, just tying it together looks really good, and you can hardly tell that it was two buildings.
Again, that's why it was awarded, because it's a good-looking building.
Yeah.
Based on the use of the siding and the cupolas and the nice carriage doors really-
It blended very well.
Bring it all together, and it worked well with the existing building where we kind of remodeled the front of the existing building.
Right.
So it all tied together and worked out well. Again, that's why the award.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to adjust the schedule here for just one thing. Chief Police Tom Mosley?
Yeah, I'm here to introduce a new officer. His name is Andrew Mons. And he's most recently been, I apologize for not having a resume for you, that kind of got snagged up, but he's most recently been with West Springfield Police Department as an auxiliary, and he works at Mercy Medical Center as a security officer. He will be entering, starting today, the field training officer three-month course. So he'll be riding with Mike and Clint and the rest of them until he's satisfactorily completed his training. You can ask him anything you want.
You excited to come and work for the town of Hatfield?
Yes.
How many years did you say you worked for Springfield?
About a year.
Year, just about a year. And he's going to be on that new starting program that you-
Yeah, the FTO, the FTO program, which takes about three months, depending on how many hours. If they put in a lot of hours, they can get it done quicker. But up to three month training period for the firearms qualification and all, it's regular that we put all of them through.
Okay.
So he'll be fully trained, as well as, he'll be trained better than most of the police officers in the area when he's done.
In the area. How about in Hatfield?
Be equal to the people in Hatfield, but above most of the surrounding towns, because they don't do an FTO program.
Very good.
They come in and throw them the keys and say, "Go do it."
Welcome aboard.
Glad to have you.
Welcome.
Good luck. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Let's go. I told you it was easy.
Is there a motion to approve Board of Selecting meeting of minutes of 30 May?
May 30, I have one correction there. On the second page.
Okay.
In the first paragraph down at the bottom, where it's a former coordinator, used to be Bob, it's Osepowicz.
Okay.
O-S-E-P-O-W-I-C-Z.
All right. As amended?
Other than that-
Second?
I'm second as amended.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve Board of Selecting meeting minutes of 4 June?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First item taking up today concerns audits. Normally, we do one of these every year simply as a good business practice. We did not, for a variety of reasons, not complete one for fiscal year 12, and much less, we haven't done one for fiscal year 13 yet, hasn't closed out. But we do need an audit to satisfy the lender for our vehicle lease. Also, we need an audit part of our bond issuance for the $2.4 million water transmission line. So here to discuss strategy, kind of a way ahead, we have two individuals, Mr. Tom Scanlon Jr. from Scanlon Associates, and also Greg Winters, our town treasurer. Greg?
I'd like to propose, since my previous firm can't do the audit, my situation with the treasurer, it's possible for-
Just so folks understand, Greg formerly worked with Scanlon Associates and has been our auditor for some years.
So because of that fact, I'd like to propose is that Tom Scanlon do the financial statements of the town, okay? The balance sheet and various things like that. Get the things, the items ready for free cash certification. Help Mike out a little in that respect. I know we've been late in the past, and I talked to Tom, and he said he could probably do it by September 30th, okay?
Okay.
And then we'd have to contract with another auditing firm to do that, but the price for auditing firms have gone up lately. So if a firm has a financial statement that's already prepared for you and items reconciled, the audit fee is probably a cheaper aspect because they don't have to do as much work. So that's my proposal as far as that goes.
Okay, in terms of funding, we use the fiscal year, incumbent of the fiscal year 12 funds that were planned for the audit-
Correct.
-to do the work Tom would do for us, and then the fiscal year 14 budget, budgeted item for an audit to cover down.
And then there's one other thing, since this year we're going to have a bond issue, okay? The bank wants an audit by January 31st, so we have to keep in mind that. We probably should go out and start seeking proposals so they can at least have a time schedule for that. And that's basically for, like you said, the 2.4 transmission line and the other debt that we're going to refund, so.
Do you have any issues with that or questions?
No, I don't have any issues with that. We already, I think we already went over that-
Yep.
A while back.
Basically, yeah.
Okay, great.
Tom, want to say anything or?
I don't. I enjoy working for the town, in some capacity with the town. On the 12 audit, I know RDA has an exemption that you can apply for a waiver. I'm not too sure about the capital lease, but I think you might want to look into, sort of see if the 13 audit satisfies.
We'll have to check on that.
Yeah. Because sometimes they don't require a full audit, you know, some type of financial, saving like a balance sheet or something like that. So it's possible that's all they're looking for.
Well, that's, that's another wrinkle, but that'll be a wrinkle outside of this. We need this in all events for the bond issuance.
That definitely has to be done.
Okay, so do we have, we have to put something out, our P L for-
Yeah, as far as selecting an audit firm, you can just call and solicit proposals, all right? Doesn't have to be competitive, anything like that. But then Tom should probably sign an engagement letter with the agreed upon procedures.
Correct, yeah.
So that he spells out exactly what he's going to do.
Is that on your part, or is that on our part?
That's-
Well, Tom will prepare the agreed upon procedures, and you would sign that. That's, you don't have to do anything with that. But going out for a proposal, it's just a matter of calling up firms and telling them what you want and-
Okay. Little concern that I have, and I may as well bring it up now and get it right out front, to make sure that there's no conflict of interest between your job and working with Tom-
Right.
-and that kind of stuff. We have to be very careful.
Yep, we do. And see, he's going to prepare the financial statements, so that way he's not expressing any kind of opinion. And that's the big reason why he can't do the audit because of my relationship with the firm, okay? But he's not expressing an opinion, just putting the statements together, reconciling with the school department, the tax collector, and the treasurer, putting together a set of financial statements, getting things ready for free cash. And this way you'd have free cash in case you have a special town meeting and the-
What I, what I'm saying is, I don't think you can hire him to do that.
No, I can.
No. We're hiring.
The board, I can't really hire anybody.
Oh, okay.
That's why I'm here today, really.
Okay.
Yeah. So only with the Board of Selecting.
Okay. Is there a motion to proceed with this strategy?
I believe that we proceed with the-
As outlined?
As outlined, right.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The other thing, though, you're going to follow up with?
The lease company.
Lease company.
I'll see exactly what they need.
Yeah, and usually a balance sheet suffices for that internally, and then they want an audit usually within a two-year window.
Okay.
But 13, you have out by January, and I'm sure that will mostly some companies have.
Some wrinkle comes about, you know.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next item, Ms. Mary Kersel.
Hi, Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry, and-
No, that's all right.
Heather, I'm sorry, what's your last name?
Heather Warner.
Warner?
Yes.
Nice to meet you, ma'am. Ms. Kersel and Ms. Warner from the Franklin and Hampshire Substance and Tobacco Prevention Partnership, and they're here to inform the board about their program and activities and answer any questions. Thank you.
Can I give you my, one with my papers on? And then we have one copy of this.
Thank you. So I work with Ed, and so does Heather, with the Board of Health on, as part of the Franklin, Hampshire Substance Tobacco Prevention Partnership, and it's 21 different boards of health in Hampshire and Franklin counties. And our goal is mostly through regulation, but also through educational programs to prevent youth from starting to smoke, help people quit, and to prevent exposure to secondhand smoke. So I'm here today to talk to you as the liquor licensing board, because one of the things that we would like to do is to have our programs connected in some way. So some of the things that both of our programs do are we, we send youth into stores and to see if they can purchase tobacco products. And Heather's program, which works mostly with alcohol prevention and drug prevention, does the same thing with alcohol, alcohol checks. So we have the same kind of programs, and what we, what we think would be really helpful is if you knew when a tobacco sale was made, because if a store, and I gave you a packet of information, if a store that is selling a controlled substance like tobacco doesn't check identification, then that might be a flag-
Not checking liquor.
-that they're not checking adequately for alcohol sales, too. So that's really, that's really our goal. And I don't know what I did with my, oh. So this is an example of, I don't know if you know this, but this is an example of a youth ID for checking. And right on, and our IDs, I should pull out my wallet, but if you look at your ID, you probably never think about it, but yours is landscape format, goes the other way. So youth IDs are-
Vertical.
Vertical.
Portrait.
Portrait. And it says, I'll pass this around, I put one in your pocket, but it says right on it, not under 18 until, under 21 until. So you can see that it's pretty easy for somebody to check ID if, and our regulations, the boards of health regulations state that they should be checking for anybody who looks under 27.
And for alcohol, it's at a minimum under 30, and really, it should be under 40.
So what we would like to think about is if there's a tobacco sale, and I think in the packet of information I gave you, two of the, two of your vendors have tobacco and alcohol permits. So, and that's pretty standard. I think I put the chart, I was surprised, but you know, almost 50% of stores in the, in these towns that we cover that sell tobacco also sell alcohol. So there's a pretty, there's a fairly high connection between these stores, and they're getting education about alcohol and education about tobacco. So there's, there's lots of, there's lots of information about that. So what we would just like is if the board of, if you would think that it might be a good idea for the Board of Health to let you know when there's a-
Violation.
-when there's a tobacco violation, and that can be entered into the record for a vendor that has an alcohol license.
Maybe last year we had about three or four violations.
For tobacco.
For tobacco, but two of them certainly I checked, and two of them just last year were in these stores that sell alcohol, too. The other store had a couple, but they don't-
The fellow's no longer in business, so-
Yeah.
He's taken out of the equation.
So I mean, one question I have is, I'm not sure if your local police are actually doing compliance checks for alcohol, or whether you rely on the ABCC to come in and do that. Do you happen to know?
A little bit of both.
It is a little bit of both. So have you, as a licensing board, had an alcohol, youth sales violation come before you?
No.
Not for years.
No.
Yeah.
Very, very minimal. I can't even remember the last time we had one.
Not for six years.
Yeah. And you only have a couple of places. I mean, so the good news is that hopefully they're doing a pretty good job of checking. You know, we do know, like, that around neighboring towns, you know, the compliance rate is about 90, 95%, you know, with Amherst, Northampton, East Hampton. But we also know that when you don't do checks consistently, that that goes, that rate goes way, you know, down, up. So like in East Hampton, before we started doing compliance checks, 50% of their establishments sold. Out of, you know, 30 establishments, that's a lot of places selling. So, so it is good to do them, and you know, I think there isn't a lot of experience of boards actually having these violations come before them. But when they do, you know, and you all know this, that, you know, that the difference is when it's done locally versus the ABCC, is that you have to, you have to give a warning or close the place for a certain amount of time. You don't have the option of giving them a fine, like the ABCC does. But the, the person who comes in for the violation has the choice of, what do you call it, appealing it and going to the ABCC if they'd prefer to pay a fine than to, you know, be closed. But you know, one of the things that we're doing is working with the licensing boards to develop some model regulations for licensing, I mean, for alcohol sales to minors. And you know, included in that is, you know, a structure of penalty structure for first, second, third offense, and you know, one of the things that we're looking at-
Sort of modeled after the tobacco control regulations.
And I think one of the things that we see in the licensing regulations as well is that if they're in violation of other laws in the town, whether it's to not pay taxes or other things, then they can also, you know, that can count against them when they have an alcohol violation as well, or vice versa. So I think that there's, the one thought is to weave in some of the tobacco stuff. And so one is that it can flag when, when you should be checking again a certain establishment, because they've sold to youth tobacco. Or second is it can be built right into the regulation as, into the penalty structure.
One thing that we do do is we check if there is a violation.
Yeah.
We won't issue the permit.
Oh, that's good.
Okay?
Uh-huh.
If they're back taxes, if they owe money anywhere in the town, or whatever.
Yeah.
We make sure we check that before we issue the license.
Yeah.
And for some reason, we have more violations. I think we had four of them last year, just on the cigarette.
Uh-huh.
And that's because of the, the checking that we do, the-
You stepped up the checking.
Yeah. Dennis, of course, goes around with the kids and checks and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And I know each one of the establishments got caught last year, so, and that was a big to-do.
Wow, yeah.
But when they do get caught, there's a fine, starts out, and I believe it's a warning, the first one, and then the second one is a hundred dollars, and then the third is-
Permit suspensions.
It just keeps climbing up.
So what's happening, just for your information, is with youth tobacco sales, the sales of cigarettes, pack of standard Marlboro or Newport's, is sort of steadily dropping, and I've given you this in your package, and you can see from this chart that over time with the tax increases, that kind of thing, because price point for teens is a big deterrent. That's been dropping fairly steadily, right down to almost 15% of youth smoking. Start, and here where we started in 1999, it was at 30%. So it's dropped by half, which is a significant decrease. But what we're seeing is a slight increase in these other tobacco products, which I brought my little cookie tin so you can see. But you know, it's all these flavored cheap products. So these little cigars cost about, you know, here's a little, so there's pricing, marketing, and availability.
Candy.
Pricing, marketing, and availability are, these are tobacco products that are very cheap, they're flavored, they're, you can see that, it's hard to tell which is a candy bar and which is a, you know, that looks like a little lipstick container.
Yeah.
You know, that's nicotine gel, so during H1N1, you could just buy nicotine to rub into your hand.
It's got 20 cigarettes in a little case.
And then here's another product that I have in here, and these are dissolvable tobacco products that you just put in your mouth, and they just dissolve like a candy. So what's happening is youth are starting to favor these flavored single products because they're 69 cents, you know, they're very cheap. So the, your Board of Health has recently enacted new regulations that increase the price point for little cigars in the packaging. And so, you know, it's just, if you're in the, in a convenience store, we don't see this colorful stuff because we're not, we're not looking for it.
I'll be quite honest, I've never even seen any of this.
No, no, you don't, you don't notice it. You clearly don't, adults don't notice it. It's marketed to kids, but children, children notice it. And that's, you know, there's a lot of money that goes into that kind of marketing, so.
What they're trying to do is, is once they get them hooked in a nicotine, then they'll start smoking or whatever. That's what they're hoping to-
Yeah, and some of these have much higher nicotine levels than a, than a cigarette. So, so it's an insidious marketing ploy, and that's why it's really terrific that your Board of Health has taken very proactive steps through regulation, which is what a Board of Health can do, to prevent this, to get the price points up. And we have lots of educational programs for merchants. If, every year we inspect the stores and do merchant education, and then if, if a merchant sells, then our enforcement officer goes back and does an additional educational program. And we're trying to pro, tie our enforcement activities with the Federal Drug Administration, which is also doing inspections of your stores. So, and again, we're trying to work really, even though it's the Board of Health and the Select Board doing slightly different activities, you have a huge advantage because you have a Board of Health member on your Select Board, but you know, most, most towns don't have that connection. And so we're really trying to connect this, all of this, all of the substance abuse programs. And it needs to be a multifaceted program. The Board of Health, of course, is a regulatory body, so that's their job. We try to do education, and the tobacco control program has some quit-smoking programs, and then we're trying to sync up with the alcohol and drug prevention programs, too, to make it a little bit more cohesive and coordinated.
Just so everybody knows, that we, when, when a new regulation comes up, we usually adopt it. And the last one I think we adopted was to ban cigarettes in pharmacies, even though we don't have any pharmacies.
That's good.
We adopted the regulation because in the future, if for some reason a pharmacy wanted to come in, we've already got the bylaw there, and it protects us. So we take a look at the future.
Doesn't apply to marijuana, it's meant for you to-
Marijuana's a whole nother process here.
Yeah.
Well, that's a medic, that's theoretically a medical issue.
Yeah.
It's still a problem.
And I'm just looking at your 10th grade marijuana use here, actually, and it's for 30-day use. This is the county level. This far here is the Hatfield level, so it's higher than the county level quite a bit there, at 40% using in the past 30 days, and-
Where do you get that figure?
Well, this is your Hatfield data from 2011.
I don't think I didn't give you that. Did you give them this chart?
No.
No, this is the, this, the coalition that I work with, the Strategic Planning Initiative for Families and Youth. We survey every high school, middle school in Hampshire County every two years, and we ask like 120 questions or so about alcohol and drug use. And the good news in Hampshire County and in Hatfield is that, you know, ecstasy and heroin and all that stuff is pretty much nonexistent. There's a little bit of amphetamine, which is sort of prescription drug use, but really, the drugs and, you know, alcohol and marijuana are the choice in cigarettes across the county. But the, but the bad news is, it's pretty high rates, and you know, Massachusetts is pretty high as well compared to the nation.
40% is pretty high.
Yeah. And you know, it's hard to, in your, in your public school, in middle and high school, you have some school choice, so it's not all residents.
Significant proportion.
So you have to look at your data, you know, through a filter, you know, various different filters. It's also a small cohort, so it may change from year to year based on that cohort.
Smallest in the state.
Because it's a small school. We don't even look at your, your senior data, because it's only 19 students. So it's hard to really make calls on that. But it is, you know, it is a significant issue, and we also look at like when parents have clear rules, when students say that my family has clear rules about alcohol, and then we cross-tabulate that with how many students actually use alcohol. And there's a real compare, a real correlation between families that have firm, strong rules and families that don't, and whether their kids use or not. And the same is true for marijuana. We ask, you know, you know, how upset would your parents be if you used marijuana? And those parents who are not really upset, their kids are using at a higher rate. So it's, it's interesting. There's also a higher level of drunk, drinking and driving, and I think partly because Hatfield's rural. So you know, I think most rural towns have a higher rates of drinking and driving and riding with a drunk driver. But yeah, just, it is an issue, but we can also track it and track changes. We just did your 2013 survey, so we'll be getting that data back really soon. And last year, we presented this data to the school system and to, we did a parent night. So you know, maybe we'll do that again this year, too. But we're happy to work with, you know, police if they want to look at some of the protocols.
Back to marijuana, one, an item later for discussion on our agenda. We're talking about setting up a study group to look at bylaws, rules, regulations for the respect of the marijuana dispensaries.
Right.
If you have any input or suggestions about bylaw-
Yeah.
... material, rules, regulations related to that issue.
Cheryl Sabara would be, Ed, Cheryl would be a good, a good contact for you. She's a, an attorney with the Mass Association of Health Boards, and they've done a lot of research about this, and they, they know quite a bit about the bylaw issues and the legal issues surrounding it. So she would be a very good contact.
I think she's the one that did the presentation up in Greenfield.
She did that presentation, so she has a lot of, a lot of-
That's the information I gave you.
She has a lot of good, I mean, she could give you a really good overview of what's in the regulation itself, which informs where you want to go. And, and she has quite a bit of information about bylaws and regulating that way.
And that's probably the way to go, because it's changing so quickly, because towns are trying stuff and either succeeding or failing. So there's all these precedents being sort of, you know, coming down the pike very quickly. So I have some information, but it's changing and evolving very quickly.
And she's, she's really on top of all of these things, so I think she would be, and she's more than happy to come and consult with town. So, so I think she'd be a great resource for you. So is there anything that we can do for you?
Want to do some spot checks?
Tobacco, alcohol?
While we're doing tobacco all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we don't send kids in to do alcohol. I don't know if you guys do or not. I don't, I don't-
Who do you send, what do you do?
Well, we do, we, we, the coalition comes in and does our spot checking on the cigarettes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. But as far as the alcohol and stuff, I don't want to get into that too much on what we do, but-
Yeah.
We monitor that.
Yeah. So I mean, right, there's, and I guess, you know, it's sort of, it depends on what resources you have to do that, but I'd be happy to, you know, we've assisted the South Hadley Police Department in doing- the South Hadley Police Department in doing, you know, setting protocol and other things for alcohol checks, um, shoulder taps, you know, where kids try to ask adults to buy outside the package store, um, and there's no penalty there, just, it's an educational thing, um, there's also, you know, just parking lot surveillance and stuff like that, um, but I'd be happy to.
But there's no actually, like, on cigarettes, you can go in and send the kids in and if they sell.
Yep, we do that, yeah.
How about on the alcohol?
Right, so, like, um, North Hampton and East Hampton and Amherst, um, Amherst is a little different, because I handed out the rewards and reminders, what we do in Amherst is we have been doing purchase surveys, which are basically, we send someone twenty, uh, uh, how old, um, twenty-two to twenty-four years old in, so they're already of legal age, but they try to purchase alcohol without an ID. Then we go back at the end, and those clerks who successfully checked ID get a five dollar gift card or a ten dollar gift card from a local business who donated the gift card. So, um, the merchants love it, the, the retailers, the alcohol retailers love it, because they want to know, like, when their employees are checking, they want to be tested on this stuff. There's actually a national program where the retailers buy in annually for about five hundred dollars to have their places checked, um, but we were doing it for free through our grant, um, but, um, yeah, so that's, that's a really good way to build relationships with, you know, and to just check and see what's going on, but once you do that for a while, then you kind of move on and say, well, it's sort of time to really be, you know, and then we send, we actually use under eighteen, we use anywhere from sixteen to, um, twenty, some towns use only eighteen to twenty-year-olds, um, and, you know, they just go in, and we actually do restaurants, bars, clubs, so in North Hampton, there's ninety establishments, they get checked in one night using five, you know, undercover police cars, and, you know, it's quite a, quite an operation, and that gets done.
I went on that the last time.
Yeah, that happens twice a year, um, but that's through these Bureau of Substance Abuse Services grant, uh, and Drug Free Communities grants, um, but again, I'd be happy to help, you know, just talk with and consult with the police on how they do it, and if they want to hear about how we do it.
Right, I was going to say, we could certainly review if you have a written protocol, which probably you should have, I imagine you do, but, I mean, we could review what that protocol is to just make sure that it's, um, in sync with, you know, sort of current thinking about how to, how to proceed, it protects you, um, and, and it makes a good, you know, generally makes a good check, and at least with tobacco, we have advice from the court systems about the kinds of protocols that they want followed, so it's just, it's good to just review it, so we could certainly do that, and then talk about, um, what, you know, how frequent the checks are that you're doing and, and what you might want to do, so we could certainly work with you on that.
And, and there are some towns, especially up in Greenfield, where there's a lot of little towns, and it might be worth a conversation, I think, you know, for a smaller, you know, I don't know how much it would cost for police to do it locally, but they might be able to pay a small amount of money and farm it out, you know, so that when North Hampton does theirs, they just swing down here, and, um, you know, there's an agreement between the police that it would be okay for their police to come in and, and do this here, so there could be some kind of thing like that, also this, you know, yeah, I think that would, um, probably be the easiest.
My concern was, because when I saw this, this here, okay, I mean, we have a lot of underage drinking here, and my concern is where are they getting the booze from, okay?
Yeah.
Um, if they're not getting it from in-town, they're getting it from out-of-town, or they're getting it from somewhere, okay?
Yeah, right.
It's to find out where it's coming from, and that's the whole, you've got to find out where the resource is.
Well, we do ask that question, um, let me see if I can find it here.
None of these things, though, are the answer by themselves, it's like having a comprehensive, like Heather said, there's a, a feeling in town that it's not, it's not acceptable behavior, there's educational programs, there are quit programs, there are enforcement activities, it's kind of a, a whole community approach to these things that has the biggest impact.
Here's the chart on access, though, just, I think, so, you know, mostly it's social access, um, which doesn't mean that compliance, you know, compliance checks are hugely important, because I think even when you do compliance checks, they, they, the retailers can spot them, you know, and they also, so they kind of know when they're happening and not, and there's often phone trees and stuff.
Can I, this is public information right now?
Yeah.
I'd just like, it's okay with you, I like to just read this, okay, this is access to alcohol, all grades in Hatfield, someone over twenty-one, thirty-four point one percent, someone under twenty-one, twenty-six point four percent, home without permission, thirteen point two percent, a brother or sister, twelve percent, um, home with permission, eight point eight percent, I bought it with a fake ID, three point three percent, I bought it with a, let's see, a.
Without a fake, with any, without any ID.
Without a fake ID, three point three percent, and a stranger bought it for me, two point two percent, so.
A lot of it's someone that people know.
Some of it's coming from home, some of it's, uh, being bought by people over twenty-one. So, um, if someone's caught over the age of twenty-one, then they're ones that are going to be serving the, uh.
Yeah, and sometimes it happens way off-site, and someone has gone, but also I think it, it's another reason to do some of that parking lot surveillance, you know, because if someone is bringing alcohol from the store and into a car where there's a lot of underage people, you know, that's, that's actually not legal either, to be transporting it, and.
Well, rather than, you know, trying to tell this on the fly here, we appreciate the information you've given us, you've outlined a number of services that are available to the various, uh, departments and boards here in town, and, uh, we'd certainly like to follow up on, on that and take you up on your offer for help.
Sure, good.
Meanwhile, thank you very much for, for joining us today.
Okay.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Welcome. Next time, we're talking about the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Program. Uh, there was a package in your read ad for the meeting today, and it outlines in great detail the requirements, levying on the town and on the school district, uh, with respect to this grant. Uh, recall, recently, in conjunction with the school department, the Board of Selectmen endorsed, uh, an application for a grant for a feasibility study at Smith Academy with regard to the potential, uh, repair of the roof and, and/or windows, uh, there. Uh, we've been subsequently, quote, invited, end quote, uh, to participate with the Massachusetts School Building Authority on this project, that doesn't mean there's the final approval of anything, but rather an okay to proceed. Yesterday, we, town administrator and myself met with the school administrator, school, excuse me, the school superintendent and a member of the, uh, school committee kind of walked through the various requirements in the MS, uh, the building authority's, uh, package as to kind of who's doing what, and in addition, we had a telephone session with representative of the, uh, School Building Authority on, on the requirements. Just a, kind of a summary of all that, it's clear that the school committee has the lead on this, uh, and they're going to vote on funding the design, and you noticed in the package, there's some real near suspense states that we have to comply with. Uh, on the fourth of September, there's a whole set of documents due from, signed off by both the school and, and the Board of Selectmen, indicating, uh, we agree to comply with all the various terms and conditions, and it's also has to do with some budget items and agreeing with the project schedule. Uh, the feasibility study is due out twelve December, Hatfield must vote on the total funding for the project within ninety days of next, essentially the first of next February. Uh, we, we had a discussion with the representative of the Building Authority who indicated that they thought we could get a waiver on that date to make it coincide with our town meeting there, so we could work the funding piece through our regular processes without having some special town meeting just on this, on this item. We also had a discussion with the, uh, Building Authority concerning the requirement that the town certify it had a Massachusetts certified, uh, public procurement officer, we don't. The town administrator has taken certain courses, but he's not yet qualified, however, they agreed that, suggested that, uh, as, as long as we could identify and commit to having that course and certification completed by a certain date, uh, probably this fall, that, that would be acceptable, uh, in, in, in this submission, we just simply footnote that, that certification. If all, all this is approved, actual construction would be, uh, next summer, so, I, I, all I wanted to do is kind of share with you, one, the package as to what the whole set of requirements were, kind of agreement with the school, that they've got the lead, they're going to be pushing on their side and bringing forward to us what they need of us. Uh, one, one of the things, uh, here is, this is a reimbursement program, it's a little over fifty percent reimbursement, and the rest of the cost is on the, on the town and/or school, and whatever, whatever the cost share it would be, we're talking about, about, about a one point one million, roughly.
Roughly.
We don't, we don't have, you know, haven't done the feasibility study yet, so, it's, so we're talking about, uh, over five hundred thousand, over half a million dollars on, onto town and school to, to pick up for this roof and window replacement project that, uh, at Smith Academy, should it get approved, of course, the feasibility study itself is in addition to that, so, kind of, that's where we are right now, it's going to be on a fast track, but will be, uh, one, getting Paul scheduled for the, uh, certification, procurement certification, which we need in all events, I think it'll be helpful, very helpful for the long term, uh, and the school will be acting very shortly on the, on the feasibility, uh, study funding, and then coming back for the rest, uh, probably in, in, later in July.
Jeff, a question for you.
Sure.
Vote authorization of local funding for schematic drug design, okay, that, it's, uh, must be within sixty days of the date of invitation by the board.
Right, the date of invitation was five June, so that means by five August, uh, the town has to commit to the funding, and they, the school, is going to take that up with a, at a school committee meeting about funding that out of school choice.
And this is something we have to vote on also?
No, it doesn't, one, it was already in the capital plan, so it satisfies the requirement of our bylaws, uh, about this, these two projects, the windows and roof, so, it, the bylaw requires capital planning to have, quote, considered, so it has, it has considered. We don't have to act on it, if, if the school committee votes to fund it out of their funds, school choice, that's fine, that's acceptable to the School Building Authority.
But what I, what I don't, it's asking for the chief executive officer, which is you, okay, I, I'm concerned about us.
Well, it's us collectively.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about us signing that, if we don't have the approval from town meeting.
Well, if, if, if the school board votes it.
Yeah.
Uh, the Building Authority will accept that as a commitment to pay for the feasibility study.
But I guess I'm, my concern is it's got to be contingent on approval at May town meeting for.
No, no, that's for the full project, this is just the feasibility study.
Okay, I'm, I'm reading this, I'm reading the second part then.
There's two parts, there's funding for the feasibility study.
Right.
And then there's funding for the whole project.
Right, and the funding for the whole project.
Would have to be done by town meeting.
Right, okay, well, it's, it's saying by, by May first.
By ninety, yeah, but we're, we, but we already went through that, they, saying, look, our town meeting is what, second Tuesday in May, can't we, instead of one May, put it in our regular process?
That's what I'm.
And they were okay with that.
Make sure we get that in writing, though, okay, otherwise, otherwise I'd be hesitant, I'd be signing, but putting that contingent upon town meeting approval.
No, 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 again, again, the feasibility study vote will be taken by the school board.
Right, I understand.
And if they agree to pay for it, that's it, there, there's no town meeting discussion of the feasibility study.
Okay, but the scope of the work, which would have to be voted at town meeting, is here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the full project, to actually do it.
And that's what I'm concerned about, if, if we're going to commit to that, and it's got to be, okay, uh, within ninety days of January twenty-ninth, and you've got to sign that.
We'd put an asterisk on that item in the.
As long as it's.
On the certification, that, you know, C note, such and such, and we'd have that qualification per discussion with representative on the twenty-third of June, they agreed that it could be done.
That's, that's all I have there.
Anyway, it's in work.
Um, before we take an objection, we, I'd like to move that we, uh, appoint Andrew Montz to the, as part-time police officer.
Is there a second? Oh, I'll second, you, you weren't, you weren't here.
Okay.
I'll second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's get this.
We just wanted to get that out of the way.
Term, term period for one year?
Oh, the term.
Uh, one year, for a term of one year.
It's automatically, the, oh, please, a one-on-one year term. Oh, you're just needed for the minuteski, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
How about next time, we get the resume ahead of the person showing up, so we can review it, and get him on the agenda? We still, as of yesterday, I spoke to the chair of the energy committee, still had not called the meeting, uh, I have talked to other members of the, some other members of the energy committee who are trying to move this thing along. In discussion with another member of the energy committee other than the chair, uh, kind of the sense was, yes, there had been some grumbling, but he didn't sense that, uh, folks were, you know, disenchanted and ready to walk, leave, or not perform, uh, so.
They knew it was urgent that we asked for a reply, and they didn't give it to us.
The chair knew that it was important, and that we haven't got anything back, and he promised as of yesterday to get something, uh, scheduled, but.
I would like to move that, uh, we either receive, or they come and do a presentation by next meeting, and if they're not here by next meeting, we abandon the energy committee charter, revoke them, and we'll start from scratch and, and start a new committee, uh, on what relate, you know, um, I just, something has to push them, because, I mean, it, it's nice to come in and talk, but talk is cheap, okay, I want to see action, that's the bottom line, and they're not coming in, they're not, they're not coming in doing a presentation, we're caught, we have a lot of work to do to get the town hall windows in, we've got a lot of paperwork to fill out for our grant application, um, Mr. Barry came in asking for us to, to, to get help with the, uh, energy committee and get it going, and look at the new, new projects, and look at the projects and see what needs to be reconditioned, uh, or gone over and revamped, and there's nothing there, and in order for us to get, and like you said, in order for us to get more money, we need to get these things done, and if they're not going to do it, we need to find somebody that will do it, that's how I feel about it. So, my motion is to, to give them, uh, until our next meeting, to come back, be on the agenda, and give us a presentation on what they're going to do, or we abandon the committee. I don't know how you guys feel about it.
Well, I don't know, I want to go as far as abandoning, abandoning the full committee, because I'm sure there are a few on there that would like to stay on there, my suggestion would be to have Paul and the village call each one, and see if they still want to be on this committee, first of all, um, but we have to start acting very quickly on the issues. But we have to start acting very quickly on the issues at hand with the windows and everything else. I just don't want to threaten a committee. I mean, you know, I mean, I sooner have Paul, or all of us, for that matter, call each, each one of them individually and just say, "Hey, you know, we understand there were some issues, we can, you know, work together to get that cleaned up, number one, and then let's move on."
My intention here is to do away with the existing charter and revamp the charter. That's what my intentions are here. It's not to abandon the committee, for say, it's to create a new charter here, because the charter needs to lead them in a direction that we want them to go here. Jeff, you need some input, your thinking here.
I am. Yeah, I, well, kind of, I'm a split role here. On the one hand, it's time to move out, there's no question about it, and I understand your frustration there, and on the other hand, I tend to agree with Chan that there are, I know, a number of folks on that committee that want to proceed, and it's just a matter of getting the leadership moving on this thing. So, how about a middle ground in that? One, Paul and I will sort out contacts, and we will contact each member. And then, two, we can send the chair and with courtesy copies to all the members of the specific tasks that we're looking for, that we reviewed with the chair of the energy committee, that we were looking for to get done. And then invite them back at our, for our next, our next meeting. And get a report...
Paul, it's on my motion.
Are they on board for that or not? And, because we need to move out, or otherwise, we can supplement that activity with the outfit that town administrator guardian, or whatever, whatever the name of the outfit was, that could help do some of that work. And in any event, that outfit could help the committee do some of that work.
Absolutely.
One of the issues was, well, they've got lots of stuff to do on their plate, and they are volunteers, I understand it.
When Jim came, and you and I, Paul, were, he was meeting with you, and I walked in, and he was very concerned, and he needed action now, and the committee is just dragging their feet, and that's not okay.
We're not looking good in terms of the state, so...
Yeah, so, you know, we just want to move this thing forward, and if they don't want to move it forward, then we'll move it forward.
All right, so, we'll get together, we'll make a personal contacts, and then...
Okay.
And invite them back to, they can have their meeting between now and our next meeting, and have them back for our next meeting on the agenda to go over the requirements.
Okay, that sounds good. Sounds good.
Cable.
Paul, I guess you were supposed to come up with some new...
You coming up with a new charter, or...
Yes, yeah, I'm looking at the old one, and I've been, Don Novak, the station manager, and I have, you know, had some discussions about it, and I think one of the, one of the main things that I think we're going to want to change from the existing charter is that there's no requirement for actual involvement with the, with the station. Some of the people who have been on recently, you know, really did not have any kind of experience with videography, or, you know, any technological background. I think what we're really looking for is people who can actually help out, not just, you know, tell the station manager what to do. I think that's, in order for the, the station to really work the way I think people want it to work, I think that's a, that's an absolute requirement.
Okay, so are you drafting a new charter?
I'm drafting a new charter, yes.
Okay.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman. On this charter that you gave us to look in the package, is this, when I looked through it, and there's items that are crossed out here, is that something you just did, or is this something that was done?
That was done.
Because one of the items in here is the station manager will submit the query check by the state as a condition of employment. That has to happen, okay?
Anyone who works there...
You can't cross that out, that has to be there.
Yeah, I don't know what that's about.
So, there's a lot of things in here that are crossed out, so I guess my next question is, when do you think this will be ready for us? I want to put you on the spot.
Another month or so.
So, by our September meeting, we should have a...
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Recreation.
I will do what's going on.
Okay. Are you Melody? Come on up, Melody. See if we can...
This is Ms. Melody Edwards, some, I'm glad you're smiling. Some weeks ago, or months ago now, the board of selectmen advertised a position vacancy on the recreation committee. Ms. Edwards came in, volunteered. We appointed Ms. Edwards as a member of the recreation committee. Subsequently, the recreation committee came in saying that, well, this conflicted with their internal procedures of longstanding, of which frankly, I never heard, but that, in fact, they had another individual who had some particular skills that they were looking for and wished to appoint, have someone else appointed. Our counter was, and it should be clear that the board of selectmen appoint, period, end of story, but we're certainly trying to work with the committee. We proposed as kind of a balancing, something everyone could walk away with, by creating another position on the board to allow the board to hire or to bring on an individual that had some particular skills that they were interested in, as well as Ms. Edwards, who had applied for vacancy, and there's qualified, and no one else at the time. Apparently, Ed was going to...
Yeah, I talked to Paul.
Talked to the chair of the recreation committee and tried to resolve the whole thing, so...
I talked to John.
This is taking on a life of its own, it shouldn't...
I got into it, and I talked to Paul, and Paul was supposed to talk to Melody. So, Paul, can you enlighten us a little bit of what the conversations are, and on how it went with Melody? And Melody, you can probably rooterate some here.
Well, I think, you know, I talked to Melody, and, you know, I think she's been very frustrated with the way things have turned out here, and my last conversation with her was that, yes, she's still interested in serving, but, you know, considering that, you know, the way things have turned out, she has, you know, essentially lost interest.
I didn't know that, an actual threat clearing.
Can I just say something before you say something?
Sure.
I don't want to, how can I put it? I don't want to, I don't want to lose you as a, because I feel you're good for the town, okay? And I don't want to lose you, if you're not interested in one, I don't want to lose you somewhere else, okay?
Well, I can, can I speak less diplomatically?
Sure.
It's very, I mean, I was very interested in the rec committee, have been for a long time. I do think I was very qualified for this. I don't come from the same, the rec committee should be for everybody, and right now, it's just for kids, and it's for kids who play sports mostly. And I really felt like, from what my background is, and what the kinds of things that I'm interested in, I could have really made an impact that would have had, hopefully, more people involved, would have let more people know when activities were happening, because right now, it only goes through the school. So, but at this point, it's very clear they do not want me on the board, and they want this person, this person has a background in accounting. I ran my own business, but I will admit, I had a bookkeeper and an accountant to help me, so I don't want to do accounting, and that's, or bookkeeping, and that's fine. And maybe that person is going to be better for what they need. It has been really a humiliating experience for me. Besides being really overexcited about this, and it's been my, it's my first chance to get involved in the town since I sold my business, I have time now to do that, I was really excited, I was eager, and I feel like, you know, I put hours into researching other boards, seeing what other towns do, and I had a lot of ideas that I, I mean, I wasn't going to, like, take it over, I was just gonna, I wanted to come in with, you know, something fresh. And when I showed up to the first meeting and just got kind of an uncomfortable look of disbelief, and told, you know, "I'm sorry, didn't you hear? You know, we, there's been a mistake, there's actually somebody else that we want on the board, essentially," like, how humiliating is that, you know? And the fact that this was happening, this started back in March, this whole process, and it's like mid-June now. So, I just, I don't, I would have loved to have been on the rec committee, but I don't under these circumstances, it would be ridiculous for me to go on, you know? I don't want to just have people being polite about something when they're feeling upset about it, so, but I do have some suggestions. I really feel like, since they have said that there's some internal way that they choose members, this, there is nothing that's written down. I had no idea of how to get on a board. The only reason I even managed to, like, figure out this process was kind of because I was tenacious and kept asking people and finding things out, and from different people, mostly in the town office, and there really should be something written so that more people can get involved. Half, half the reason why there's not younger people involved is because they don't know how. And you guys, you know, you guys are so experienced and have such a big knowledge base now about how things work, that it might be hard for you to understand. Like, I had no idea what the select board was really before I came into this experience. I mean, I knew you were one of many boards, but I didn't know which was the most powerful board, or, you know, like, I didn't understand how the town even worked, and I've lived here 11 years, so...
Wow.
It's not because I'm stupid, it's because I have a busy life, I have kids, and I only would come to town meeting or town hall to vote, or, so I'm just saying, if there could be something that made it easier for people to get involved, I think that would really help out the town, too. If there is something that had been written beforehand, then this probably would have never happened. And you, people might think this is just an isolated incident. I know, I have an acquaintance who went through the same experience, so I know it's not isolated.
Was it with respect to recreation, or a different committee?
No, a different committee. And I just, I feel like there are a lot of people who would be involved, but they, I've said it before, there's no notification system that reaches younger people. It's really hard to find out what's going on, except through town gossip, or, you know, when things are, become a big issue or something. So, I could have just probably quietly resigned, but I really wanted to let you guys know what this was like for me, let you know where I stand. And I'm not like, I, right now, I'm not interested probably in the rec board, but I am interested in helping the town in some way. I do want to help, I love this town, so, let me see if there's anything else that I wanted to say. I left my notes out, so, no, just make it easier, and that's about it.
Okay, what, I'm just wondering if you've got a copy of the town report in the last few years, because in the town report, every department puts a synopsis together of what they've done, what they've done for the year, how it works, and stuff like that. So, even the selectmen, I mean, we put our report together for the, for the people of the community, and in there, it tells basically what we do, okay?
It's like, that's a huge document full of many, many words, and honestly...
Lots of jargon.
It, it's a lot of, it really is, like, there's a lot of legalese, even if you don't consider it that, that makes people's minds shut off, you don't, you know, and I've read it, I've, when I became more involved, I recently read the 2012, I went online and read through one, and it's just, it doesn't, I know that's how you guys have to write things, how it has to be worded a lot of times. I've read what the committees do, but it, I don't know, it's not user-friendly.
Well, there's a difference, the town report consists of many different areas, okay? One is, we have the articles that we put on for town meeting, okay? And then we have the financial part of it. So, we don't expect the people to understand totally the financial part, and, and the, and the warrant and so on and so forth for town meeting. But as far as the other stuff, if you're interested, anybody's interested in a department or whatever, to get on, whether it's elected or appointed or whatever, certainly, you can just read that.
And I've gone on the town website, and I've read through, I've gone through the different boards, and I know now what people do, or what they're supposed to do, and I just, yeah, I don't know, it's not an easy process. It should be easier, it really should. You guys need volunteers, it should be easy to volunteer.
And, I mean, the other, one more thing that people can do, and not only you, but everybody else, if they're interested maybe in a committee or whatever, they can come and sit and just be part of the committee meeting, okay? And see what it's involved, and see what they do, okay? I know when people are running for election, they sit at our meetings, okay? Because they need to get acclimated of how it works, okay? Same as if you're an assessor, they'll come in, they'll, they'll sit in their, in their meetings just to see how things work, and it might not be right for them, okay? And then it might be. So, that's another avenue that you can take if you're interested in something, you know, historical society, same thing, everybody has their meetings, they're posted, they're posted at certain times of the month, and you can just go and see how it goes, and see how you fit, and you certainly can ask questions from the floor, and sometimes it's permitted, sometimes it's not.
That takes a lot of initiative, though. That takes a lot, I mean, I'm not the most, I'm a little shy, and some of these meetings are like little groups of people who already know each other, and then you show up, and it's kind of like, what are you doing here? And, you know, because they're so used to never having people, and, you know, if you want to be involved, I suppose, you just go and say, "I just want to know what you guys do." But I, you know, maybe there should be a guidebook or something, maybe I'll write a guidebook, a Hatfield guidebook that will help people...
Well, three things. One, on behalf of the board, I apologize for...
Thank you.
This whole situation. We have work to do with our committees, so they understand, they understand what the process is, and who appoints, and who makes selections. That's number one. Number two, I appreciate your suggestions about clarifying for everyone what, what the policies and procedures are, and how it works, so there aren't unintended missteps. And, and third, I appreciate, even after this little entanglement, you're still willing and positive about helping out the town, and we will be back.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, let me know if I can be of help.
Thank you very much, Ms. Edwards, appreciate it.
So, do you have to disavow me now of my, is there any, like, because aren't you going to unswear me in?
Well, you didn't get sworn in upstairs, you did.
Basically, you know what you're going to have to do, you're going to have to write them just a short, one-page little letter that you are resigning from the committee, then we get it.
And just give it to the town clerk upstairs. You can do a handwritten one, just get it in there.
I think I'll write it more. As a case letter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You had something on appointments, pardon me? Oh, appointments changing back to July 1st, question mark?
That was Selectman Lesko's suggestion that...
Would that help? Make it consistent with the fiscal year?
Oh, yes, yeah. To me, it's always been that way, and I'm not sure why they changed it, or who changed it in the past, but to me, June, July 1st has always been the way that, you know, everything coincided, the town reports, everything together, and it just makes sense to me, anyway. I don't know, as a past selectman and stuff like that, and I don't know how you guys feel about it, but...
I think it was changed because the town clerk requested it be changed.
That's my understanding. My discussion with her about all this was that there was too much going on, you know, in regards to town meeting, so let's get this all out of the way, you know, well in advance of town meeting.
Okay, but how...
Okay, but how, how about, can we do this? Just ask town clerk, is there any? So make a motion subject to coordination with the town clerk. Could we change the, the date?
I'll make the motion that we, we change it to.
On July?
July first or June thirtieth, okay, the end of appointments.
Terms.
But.
Term of appointments.
But I, I'd like to discuss that more.
Sure.
Because I'm not, I'm not sure if the town clerk, um, to me, if everybody is due on June thirtieth, then you have a whole block of people. Instead of, you know, some are due in July, some are due in September, some are due all over the place. You stay consistent in the block, and that way there's no mistakes. Everybody gets appointed and it's done. So, uh, as far as the town clerk, um, I'm not sure, but we can, we can find out. I probably don't even wanna make, I'll withdraw the motion. I think we need more information. And Paul, you get more information from the town clerk, bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay.
And discuss why, because, and if I have to go and talk with her, I'll talk with her also.
No, I can talk with her. I mean, I know, uh, you know, from past experience, you know, where I've worked before, it was July first. And I think most towns, that's how they operate. I know that there's a few oddball, uh, appointments out there. Uh, I think like the registrars and it, um, they have to be appointed earlier, uh, like in March or April. And there's a couple of outliers there, um, like that. And I think, uh, the animal, I think the animal inspector.
Animal control.
There's, that's another one. Um, of course, the board only recommends that, and the state actually appoints. So there's a couple outliers, but most of them can just be, you know, the vast majority of them can be July one, which is pretty much standard operating procedure for most towns.
It's just a lot simpler to do as a block, and there's not.
Yeah, I don't under- I don't understand the way it's, it's.
It's all over the place.
It's all over the place. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, sorry.
And then I think it's confusing for the town clerk and everybody else.
To me, it is, and I've been doing this for years.
All right, so you're, we'll go back to that.
We'll come back to that.
Okay.
Uh, center school grant, uh, I just followed up this weekend, uh, and no status yet regarding, our economic development fund grant regarding center school. I guess we should read that positively. They haven't said no yet, so.
Right, right. No news is good news.
Town meeting follow-up. Well, here, here's just several things I had.
Is this what the, uh, this is about?
Yeah, well, yeah, that was, those are the articles. But one, there was an H cog article provided. We need, that, that allows us to enter into contractual agreements beyond three years. Remember, that was for net metering. Somehow that fell out. I don't know. It never got in the final. It dropped out along the way, but we need to bring that back. We need to put some money into compensating balance. We created that account. Next time, we need to put money in, into that account. I would, I would suggest we send a letter to the planning board regarding the expedited permitting. That was Article eleven, and the mixed use, mixed use development bylaw, Article eight, saying, "We support those two, and is there anything we can do to help?" Or, and to br- we, we, we endorse bringing them back at next town meeting. I don't know how you all feel about those. We have fire department language from two years ago that's still to be cleaned up. The Attorney General gave some comments back, uh, saying what needed to be cleaned up, and it never got included this whole round again for this past year. Burning without a permit and, and another bylaw, three point five. The marijuana dispensary article. I'd proposed we send a letter to the planning board, chairman of the Board of Health, chief of police, to the zoning enforcement officer referencing Article six of the May town meeting, calling for the appointment of a study group to recommend a bylaw, rules and regulations relating to medical marijuana treatment centers and dispensaries, dispensary agents. And further that the zoning enforc- uh, further appointing the zoning enforcement officer to the committee, requesting the Board of Health, the chief of police, and the planning board to designate a member to serve, and for the Board of Health to nominate a healthcare professional, either RN or MD, for appointments, for appointment to them. Just trying to kick this off to get the thing, because.
But I, I guess.
And that's just regurgitation of what the, uh, motion said, but we just need to get that committee formed.
Right.
And up and running and off the ground. And, and I shared that Larry Smith from PVPC is also heading up a group to, remember, we had that discussion the other night, Selectmen Association, uh, and he's willing to share whatever they come up with, with any working group we have. We just need to get this thing.
I guess I'm gonna go back to a number of meetings ago, and Paul, I'm gonna put you on the hot spot again. Because I asked for a list, okay? And, and you create a list here, but for some reason, the list doesn't, there's not a running list. And Jeff, thank you for you running the list or, or bringing your past lists up. That shouldn't be your job to continuously monitor this here. That should be Paul's job. And so Paul needs to create some kind of a, a, a document that's an ongoing document with a checkoff list, that these things are done. And, you know, go through the, the articles. He should be bringing it to us and saying, "This's gotta be done. This is what's gotta be done. This is what's gotta be done." So I'm putting you on a hot seat to, to see if, um, we can get our stuff together and, and move in the right direction here. Because I, I'm getting frustrated and we constantly have to bring up the things and, and, and we shouldn't be doing that. That's what we're paying you guys to do.
Well, I have a list, and it was in the last packet. But I didn't put it in this one.
Okay. Just an, just an ongoing thing and a checkoff list to see, you know, and everything we've got here and everything that needs to be done from town meeting, uh, that all should be put on a separate, you know, on the same spreadsheet, so we, we can monitor everything that's gotta be done, so.
Well, I, I agree, we need to fix the process, so everybody does what they're supposed to, but I'm just trying to get some things going. Uh, another one we need to do is Paul's drafted implementation of the veterans, excuse me, the senior work off. And now we need to amend the implementation instructions to include provision for substitution. Uh, remember, we, we have the thing, we, we did two things. One, we added the category for veterans. So veterans can participate under this tax work off program. And we changed so that both the veteran and the senior could use a substitute to do the work for them, for which they would get credit. So we need to amend our, our instructions and get those out, so we can put that program into effect.
And we're supposed to have some kind of an application for them.
Exactly. And, and the, the one on seniors, at least the basic program, you know, that was two years ago now, that we're finally. We, we need, we need to get, get it documented, get it published and, and put out the procedures so various departments can come in and request, uh, support. And then again, we need to work the HR committee. I don't know how many years ago now, and this is not Paul's fault, but, uh, the town treasurer and town accountant were to be working on some, excuse me, uh, the town, the town clerk, I guess, and the town administrator were to be working on the update of the HR policy. Uh, one of the things from two or three years ago now was the classification annex to the thing, which then would drive salaries and stipends. That, that whole thing needs to get reworked. Anyway, there's, there's a town meeting follow-up. There's a bunch of things done. What I really care about today is getting this marijuana study group. Get, you know, getting out, something out to the various activities to, to get them to appoint their people and get organized and, uh.
And it's a, it's as simple as a, a simple letter stating town meeting, approve this.
Yeah, yeah, it just.
And that, please come back to me, bye, so-and-so, date with a name. That's as simple as that.
I just read a letter when I read my notes here. All right, we just need to get on with that one.
Yep.
That's all I. Well, we were gonna talk about, uh, tailings. I thought Michael was gonna be here.
He was here, but.
He was here, but, um, you know, you've got the memo in your packet.
I can't tell what's yellow and what's pink on a copy page.
Yeah. Yeah. On the copy, the, the yellow is, the yellow's in white, and the pink is the, is the gray.
Okay.
So, uh, but he's got it, he's got it summed up on his memo to the board.
Yeah.
It says, "The amount to be close to the stabilization fund is four thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars." And that's for the H cog electricity, um, pantry linseed appraisals and billingsway appraisal.
What, what we're doing here is, over the past few years, there's been various appropriations by town meeting, and there's some tailings, the projects over, is some small amounts of, of funds still left in there. And we're taking those funds and either putting them into the stabilization fund, when that's where they came from in the begin- in the beginning, and/or we're closing them to the general fund, the other ones.
Correct.
So there's a whole, a couple, thirty-one dollars from a crease, police cruiser buy in two thousand seven. Little nickels and dimes. They're just putting them into, into a fund where, make them available again. Uh, is there a motion to approve transfer of the tailings into the fund double oh three accounts as submitted by the accountant? Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. A little concern, when you take something out of stabilization.
We're putting it back in.
Okay, but I, I think to put it back in, you also need a vote to take it out and put back in. And that's gotta be a town meeting vote. So I don't think we can do that kind of thing. That's an article, isn't it? Or maybe I'm misreading something. When you, when you're talking about stabilization, okay, that's.
Two-thirds to come out.
Pardon?
It's two-thirds to come out.
Two-thirds to come out, but I think it's, uh, two-third, anything to do with stabilization is two-thirds vote.
Okay, but we're not, okay, so we're not taking it out. We're leaving it in.
It's unused.
It's unused.
Okay, so it didn't leave.
Right, it never, it never left.
It never left.
So you're just taking it off the books?
Yeah, we're just.
These are, these are, this is strictly accounting.
We're, we're, we're removing the lien for that particular project.
Okay.
On that stabilization count. We never, it never moved from in or out.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that this is something that you wanna check on for next annual town meeting, that we might have to vote.
Well, remember, remember we did a whole.
That, that, uh.
Oh, yeah, the, the balances of.
The vote that was taken, yeah, the balance.
Yeah.
Okay, so we might have to, you know what I'm talking about, Jeff?
Well, yeah, we did that this past one. Uh, remember there's a.
Did it on these here?
No, uh, we did a, we rescinded a number of appropriations.
Right.
Where they had bal- uh, appropriations, excuse, not reproach- appropriations, but, uh.
It was appropriations, unused appropriations.
Un- unused.
And I believe it's gotta be the same here, so we gotta abolish what was voted at town meeting, because if there's something left.
Excuse me, authorizations. I'm confusing my terms.
Authorization, right. Okay, especially stabilization. The other counts we can do.
Yeah, I think, but that was, that was for borrowings. And, I don't know, or, well, these, you know, the stabilization, that's not a borrow. No, um.
Other than the stabilization, it's all different accounts that we, that we oversee. The stabilization, that's what I say. I don't think we can touch anything in stabilization.
But, but that's the point. We're not.
That's the point. We're not, yeah.
We're not. It's in the, the, the rules apply to movement in and out. All right, we're not moving in and out. We're just, we're, we're dissolving a lien for a particular project.
Basically with the accountant.
An encumbrance.
Are you trying to eliminate the article or the?
No.
What was voted here?
We already completed the.
We completed, we completed the project.
Right.
Okay, it came in under what we appropriated.
Appropriated.
Appropriated at town meeting. So that money is, basically, has never left stabilization. It's still in there. So all we're gonna do is just wipe, wipe the slate clean, basically.
That's what I'm saying. In the records, whatever it was in, that was voted at stabilization, still exists until it's removed from town meeting. I think that's the way it works. I'm not a hundred percent sure. That's something.
No, I mean, you know, but it, uh, according to my, uh, conversations with the accountant, he said he believes that, you know, for these, these accounts, the selectman had the authority to transfer. Now, there would.
There were some others.
There were some others.
It was taken off.
Um, there's another whole type of account of, of, you know, similar, um, tailings. But he believes that those particular types of accounts, and they're probably, I think they're all borrowings.
There were borrowings that you have to give.
They require town meeting action.
Yeah.
But the only one that I'm questioning is the stabilization one. That's, that's the only one that raised the flag to me.
Well, what did you wanna do then? I mean, we got this from the town accountant.
Well, the, the worst-case scenario, we'll just have to vote at that town meeting in the spring.
Well, should I go get the town accountant?
He was supposed to be here.
Well, let it go, let it go as this. We'll, we'll take it for here, and then if it's wrong, we'll correct it. Simple as that.
So, so there's.
Cause I might be wrong. The law might have changed or whatever came into play here. But I know when you're playing around with stabilization, you have to be very, very careful.
All right, so there's a motion to approve the transfer of the tailings into the double oh three, into fund double oh three accounts as submitted. And there's a second on that. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We, we have a session scheduled now for Thursday, whatever that date is with the finance committee. Can you recall what day that is?
The eleventh.
Thursday, the eleventh. And what Paul has outlined here is the.
September, no, wait a minute.
Deficits.
This Thursday, eleven?
Pardon?
This Thursday on the eleven?
No.
I mean, this Thursday?
Eleven, July.
July eleven.
Eleven, July.
Okay, that's the one we talked about.
Yeah, we have to have.
We're gonna meet with the finance.
During the months of, uh, May and June through fifteen, July, the Board of Selectmen have the authority to reallocate funds within certain limits to cover down any shortfalls that have developed. Taking, uh, you have a little extra in one account, you're able to move over to cover a, a small shortfall in, in other accounts. There's certain limits on it, uh, three percent of departmental budget.
That's at seven o'clock at night.
Or five thousand dollars, whichever is greater. Uh, the town administrator has outlined here, the accounts he's identified as having shortfalls as of the end of fiscal year thirteen. And, and proposing that, uh, a, a source of funds to cover them down. There's some issue about the source, and we'll have some discussion about that.
I'd like to make a correction, because fiscal year thirteen isn't over yet. It's over the end of the week, so.
Yeah, I understand.
As of six, seven, this is as of, um, uh, the warrants processed as of June seventh. So this is where we, this is where we stand as of then. Um, we won't know where exactly we stand, um, you know, on fiscal year thirteen until probably next week sometime. So these numbers are likely to change, but probably not change all that much.
Yeah.
So it, it, it certainly looks at this point, um, that we should be able to cover all these deficits, you know, just from the reserve fund.
Well, had a little exchange with Chair of the Finance Committee, who indicated that they'd be looking for the justification for use of the reserve even. I'm, it's a discussion we can have with the Finance Committee. Paul and I have had discussions. It makes eminent sense, if there's a Finance Committee reserve account that has not been touched, it has sufficient funds in it to cover down all the shortfalls, simply as an administrative convenience to the accountant, rather than him going nickels and dimes to a whole bunch of different accounts to come up with the sum necessary to cover down the shortfalls. Just simplify things, because otherwise, all that would just drop to free cash anyway.
Right.
Rather than, it makes more sense to us to just go to the one fund that has sufficient funds to cover everything down, just as an administrative convenience.
I mean, that's what the reserve fund is, you know, that's why it's there.
Well.
It's for unforeseen.
Exactly, and that's, but that's, but it's at the end of the year and it hasn't been touched. So, it's not just another account.
And I would like, I'd like to bring up a couple of things.
Sure.
Okay, when we get to this, this drives me crazy, because IT support, $10,490 underfunded. You've got a budget, you work within the budget, and if something goes wrong, you figure out what's going on. And you don't keep spending and spending, okay?
Well, let's spend a minute going down. Let's spend a minute going down. Insurance.
Not much you can do.
That one, that was uncontrolled. There's clearly one that goes to finance.
Right.
An individual is hurt on the job and simply submits bills and we pay, period.
As far as, yeah, as far as the IT support is concerned, you know, I looked in, the previous year, it was funded at $27,000. And then for this fiscal year, it was knocked down to $19,000. I have no idea why. But clearly, $19,000 was not enough to cover it. And I have bumped it up for next year, up to $30,000.
I thought it was level funded.
Yeah, I have no idea why.
No, it went from 20, it went from 27 down to 19.
I have no idea.
And that was a glitch in the.
Before my time.
I think we may have, I couldn't be wrong, but I think the reasoning, we may have cut it down was because we thought we were all set with everything in the building. Because that's when we were transferring.
It's a constant.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying that there wasn't going to be the problems that we were having and so, you know.
I think there's a couple of things here. What comes out of IT is also computers that come out of IT.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we buy the town computers out of IT.
Well, another problem in that account was that, well, some people knew that we were going to need to buy a new server this year, but other people didn't. And that was a $5,000 ticket, and that was definitely not budgeted for.
Okay, see, that's, that line then should be just that way, okay? $5,000 for a computer that wasn't budgeted for. But the thing is, it's not unforeseen, because people have seen that and it shouldn't have happened, okay? I don't know why it wasn't brought, I don't remember being, I mean, I sat on every Finance Committee report and I didn't, I mean, meeting it, I didn't hear anything about that. No. I mean, legal things, nothing you can do about lawsuits, that's, okay. Public building maintenance, what's going on with that, Phil? Okay, why are we $3,500 over?
That was just throughout the year, the problems throughout the year. I mean, that's where that money goes to as far as repairing the furnace or anything else.
But is that the one where, that's just the maintenance on the building itself?
Correct, that's all the maintenance, yep.
Okay.
That's not the facilities.
That's not the facility one, okay.
Well, the only other suggestion I have for, we don't, I guess we won't close on this today, but we have a proposal.
That's where we stay on as of 6/7.
But we ought to ask Mike to identify other, for the 11 July meeting, what are alternative sources?
Yeah, he's already working on that.
Okay. So, for townsfolk, we're okay, we've got it covered one way or another.
What I'd like to see happen is that we get some advance warning to this, okay? Ahead of time, I mean, somebody has to know that we're $10,000 in the red on one account, okay? This doesn't just pop up all of a sudden, all right? So.
I sent out an email three months ago, four months ago. Everybody on the Finance Committee, all the selectmen, saying that the IT was going to go over and that the insurance was going to go over. So, this, that, none of that should be a surprise to anybody.
I guess the surprise is $10,000. That's what the surprise is, Paul. And I'm not, I'm not faulting you for that, yes, you did let us know that. But maybe we ought to, on our end, we ought to follow it up a little bit closer to figure out what is, you know, what the problem is and what's happening.
And we will do that this year. We're going to do a quarterly review.
Okay.
Our budgets in a systematic way.
Good.
Kind of how goes it, here's where we are, here's 25% of the year gone, here's, where are we? So, there won't be any surprises.
Okay.
All right, so, I guess the bottom line here is we've identified tentatively what our shortfalls are. We have, there's plenty of money to cover down with some internal reallocation. And we'll finalize the thing on the 11th of July in coordination with the Finance Committee. Department liaisons for this coming year.
The Town Secretary Terry just, you know, raised the issue to me, are they going to make any changes? And I said, well, I don't know, we'll put it down on the agenda.
I'm happy the way things are, if you want to change.
That's, that's.
Make a motion and leave the liaisons in place as they are.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor, aye.
Thanks.
No change. Performance report reviews with direct reports. All I care about is we get a date when we're going to do this. You know, each liaison to the various departments was going to draft a report and then share it with everybody. So, end of the year is 30 June. We agree we'll have to one another sometime in early July, a draft performance report.
Performance report, yes.
Is that all right? First couple of weeks in July, sometime in there, we'll share them. All right. Fiscal year, I sent this thing, it's not perfect at all. But some focus areas for the board for next, this coming fiscal year, '14. It's in your package or should be, or in your email box. We're not going to resolve it today, but how about just taking a look at it and see if those are the kinds of things you think we ought to be working on?
I did look at that and I like that list, Jeff.
All right, we'll put it down for next time to lock it down.
Okay.
Police chief vacation carryover.
What was he asking for?
He said he'll have about a week left, right? He's got 20 hours or so, but up to a week carryover.
I make that motion that we let him carry over the.
I'll second that. And he's got to be, it's got to be also, if you would, Jan, used within the three months of next year. That's what we've been doing to everybody.
All right.
Okay, so, the motion is to approve carryover of leave due to unexpected circumstances for the Chief of Police, Mr. Oslie, to be used within 90 days of the beginning of the fiscal year.
And I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. TPW.
We have Nick Cristofori here from Comprehensive Environmental. We had the bid opening on June 12 for the Connecticut River Stabilization Contract for the Riverbank Stabilization Project. We had seven bidders, they have come in with a recommendation for some Co-Echo contracting, the low bidder. They went through all the qualifications with them. If Nick wants to speak on that, he was surely at the bid opening and he did the reviews of the documentations. And that's their recommendation is to award the bid to some Co.
We've worked with some Co before.
Could you come over here, use the microphone? Thank you.
Again, Nick Cristofori, Comprehensive Environmental. Yes, we reviewed some Co-Echo contractings, our qualifications, and feel that they're more than adequate to accomplish this project. We personally have worked with them on at least one other project before. And they've done good work. This is, these are the kind of projects that they do. They do bio remediation and stabilization projects, very green, very environmentally friendly. So, on that note, yeah, we're happy to recommend that the town move forward with them as the low bidder with the base bid plus bid alternate two for $193,000 for this project. Is everyone familiar with this project and what it is?
Yes.
One of my concerns is the landowners, that their property is placed back in the exact way that it was, if not better. The last few times, and I guess we had some work done down there, property owners complained about a lot of stuff thrown around and that kind of stuff, and they've got to work their fields and so they got to work around that stuff. So, we've got to make sure that.
Absolutely, yes, I've heard the same thing as well, and we've been in contact with David Wickles, property owner. And he said the same thing. We have numerous provisions in the technical specifications which have stressed the need to maintain the property in good condition throughout the project and maintain and store that project, the property after the project, pre-existing conditions or better. And we plan a meeting with the contractor out there, hopefully sometime within the next couple of weeks, and we will further stress the need to do that.
One thing to write it, the next thing is, how do you enforce it? Is there a provision in there that if they don't maintain it, that money can be taken out and it will be maintained by somebody?
You know, I don't remember, I'll have to check into that. So, I will check into that, get back to you.
Because it's nice to put it in there as a writing, but there's no repercussions on it, and then they don't do it. And then there's no way to get anything back or anything done.
Right.
So, I think, you know, we're trying to protect the people's property they're on and also the town property, so.
I appreciate the work you've done here and Comprehensive Environmental has. And is there a motion to award the Connecticut River Bank Stabilization and Enhancement Project to some company Echo Contracting?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, sir.
Nick, what do you need for, do you need signatures?
Yes, I have five copies here. And I'm planning on having each of the selectmen sign somewhere in this vicinity here. And Phil, can you attest?
Yes.
Okay, I don't need you to seal, I just need you to sign.
Make sure it's for the town to have. I've seen that before.
Phil, how many copies do you want? You want one for your records and one for the selectmen?
Correct, yeah, I think that's what I told Matt.
I think so, yeah.
Well, one, one copy of all contracts goes to the town accountant, right?
You'll get mine. Lock the door and get one. Yeah, I see town or whatever on the pages.
Hadley.
Oops. What's the completion date on that project?
Completion date is estimated to be sometime June next year. We anticipate construction to be going sometime, hopefully within the next month. It is somewhat weather dependent because they need to have access to the toe slope in the river. So, depending on how high the river is, we'll maybe push back a little bit. However, they're required to, for permit requirements, they need to construct all their dredging and any other sediment producing activities by the end of September.
What preventions do you have in place for that to protect the remaining part of the dike? If for some reason they gouge it out and high waters come in, what protects that?
Well, we've expected out in the contract that they're only allowed to disturb a certain amount of area at the time that they can then quickly restabilize it in the case of a severe weather event. So, if they knew a hurricane is coming, you know, five days or whatever in advance, they're only allowed to pull a certain amount down and then they can quickly stabilize it again.
And what's the liability insurance on that?
I believe they have either $1 million or $2 million, I don't want that.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. No, I think we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, Phil. Whately Water Lines or whatever else next?
I had a discussion with Tony this morning about this situation. You know, he has talked to their water department up there. It's my understanding that they only work a 20-hour work week, the water superintendent in Whately. They're well aware of the conditions up there. The farm, the Galunka Farm does not have to rehook into our, into their system. They can stay on our water because it's a new line from the fire hydrant, which is up in Hatfield, to that farm. So, there's no sense in them rehooking because they had, it's on them, the valve is right at the fire hydrant, and they paid to put the water, new copper line from the hydrant to the farm. So, they'll stay on our water, but the other residents on the other side will be hooking into Whately. I know there's been one request from the home, one of the homeowners there to hook in. Again, we stress that. We don't feel that the homeowner should be requesting this. I think it's a Whately water situation that they should be just going ahead, moving forward to get this project done. Because if our water main fails there, there's going to be no water supply from Hatfield.
Before, I think we ought to correct that statement. It isn't, as far as I'm concerned, it isn't our water line, it's basically their water line. I wouldn't say it's our water line because we have never maintained it really, we just, we fixed it once.
Once or twice it's been fixed, repaired by us.
Right, and that was just as a, as far as I'm concerned, a courtesy. What I'm, basically what I'm saying is that was a private line years ago. That was put in by the homeowners right along that. If they want to maintain that, we can certainly supply them with water. That isn't an issue.
Right, but when we're losing 10,000 gallons a day out of there, that's an issue for us.
Right, but the other thing is, it's going to cost them a fortune to replace that water line. And I've already talked to one of the owners over there and they're all for tying in with Whately. They don't have an issue with it.
The pipe is right in front of the house, so why wouldn't they?
So, we have two mowers, and I think one of them, is it the one that?
There's three homeowners there, but I know that, but one has already has a request into to switch it over. So, it's just the other two.
So, I mean, we just got to let them know that this is the situation, basically.
But in our package, we get this letter that, you know, one person said, we're not shutting his water off. I mean, we're not, we're looking, we're asking for Whately to.
Right.
To connect.
They, Whately will, Whately is accepting them as their customers, their Whately residents, and they had no issue with it. They're all for it. And basically, it's just a matter of, the homeowner has, the lines are already in there. The lines from Whately are already into those three homes. All they are is just stubbed off.
You mean, to the property line?
No, into their homes.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they're already there. All they have to do is hire a plumber to plum it up and break away from our system. The town will come down, put their meter in, that's the end of it. The town will come down, put their meter in, that's the end of it.
Okay. My concern is that we're losing 10,000 gallons a day. That's costing us a ton of money off of what it's costing us, okay? Just for the loss of water. What can be done to expedite this whole project?
Well, I mean, we're giving them till...
The end of July.
Till July 31st.
Okay, but then, when I read a letter like this, saying, "You're not shutting my water off," whoa.
Well, I mean, I guess we check with town attorney, but on the other hand, if that line goes bad, we're shutting it off. And it'd be no different than if your line goes from, from your gate valve to your house, that's your responsibility.
Yeah, we're, we're not...
Repair, you know? And all we do is shut it off.
As long as there's provisions in there...
You repair it, then we'll turn it back on.
As long as there's provisions in their house, they can tie into Whately's line, if what you're saying is right.
Yeah, guys from Whately told me every, every one of those homes, when they, when they were going through, they just fired a bullet right down the trench into the houses. And they already put the plumbing in, the pipe...
Just confused why we get a letter like this, so...
Well, they probably, number one, probably don't realize that they have the availability...
Well, I think that that letter was initiated before Jan and Tony went and met with the water commissioners up there, and they waived the fee for the entrance fee. I think that's, that letter came before that.
Well, on the letter, I've asked Phil to get with council, review with him the facts, and we need to draft a response. We shouldn't just let the letter hang there. Draft an answer that we coordinate with both our legal and the Whately folks as to what the expectation is of this individual and what it is, in fact, that's happening.
Yeah, I think that Paul had a conversation with town council about sending him that copy.
I sent, I sent him a copy of the letter, and I haven't talked to him about it yet.
But just don't let the letter hang there. It needs to be closed out with...
To me, it's a simple letter, because if there's water, if the pipe is in their basement, it's a matter of just a connection that's taken off the Hatfield line and put it on the Whately line.
Their meter, just plum it in, you're done.
Wow. So, it's not even like hooking into their main line and digging the front yard up, it's already there. Wow.
Yeah, they put them all in when they built that system. They just, it was, they figured it would be a lot easier just to put them in, and that'd be the end of it. And then if people ever wanted to tie in, it was there. They'd still have to pay...
And what's the four houses, something there?
Just three, three houses. Three houses there, and then we got like a number of them, but that, that's a different situation up on, off Pantry Road.
Okay, so, you're working with council and with Whately Water in resolving this...
Correct.
Individual. All right. And the other ones, are we going to come back to at a later date?
Yes.
Okay.
The Pantry Road is showing.
Yeah. Okay. All right, what other good news you have?
I do have some good news. We redid our capital plan for the paving as we submitted to town meeting. As you know, that the funding was cut to $188,000 and change from the state. But with the price that we received from the HCOG for the blacktop, instead of the $80 figure, it's 67 and change. So, we'll be able to complete all, every street that we submitted to Capital Projects.
Okay.
So, that's a bit of good news. In your packet, you have a couple of signings. We have the memorandum of agreement of understanding from the Franklin County Waste Management District for the town of Hatfield for the hauling and disposable, disposal of sludge. This has to be signed by the select board to continue our...
But before, before we get to those, did you have anything on the water line project?
Michael was supposed to be in tomorrow, but he had, has put me off till next week. He's coming in to discuss...
Okay.
Discuss it. All I can tell you, the update is that he had a conversation with DOT, Mass. DOT, in regards to our new submittal, and they're going to expedite it, so...
Okay. How about the transfer...
I've got a question. Back up a little bit. Under the Franklin County Waste Management...
We'll come back to that.
Oh, okay.
We'll come back. Transfer station permit renewal?
Permit renewal is in. We did receive a, an email that I received from Charlie Klein, who's the DEP District Coordinator here, and he didn't know that we sent the waste ban compliance in with it. So, I talked to him about that today, this morning, because part of that permit is a waste ban compliance. The waste ban compliance went to a different person than him, so I just told him that it's been submitted. So, we should be all set. He said, he sees no problem.
Okay. Let's, this abatement request?
As you can see by his reason...
We have an abatement request for a leak to a barn. My understanding was, the board previously did not approve water abatements.
Right. He had come in and, you know, he just asked if he could make out the abatement form, and of course he can, and it's up to the select board to either grant it or deny it or to revise it.
Well, refresh us on what the longstanding policy has been.
The longstanding policy is that any leaks, we do not abate. We have a written policy for select categories that we do, that I would recommend to you that we should abate. This is just a situation where there's a hydrant in the barn, the hydrant was leaking without knowing any recollection of it leaking until he went and got his water in sewer bill.
But your water runs through your house all day long, and if you can't hear the meter running or water running, I mean, that's not our fault.
No, it's not.
Okay? I mean, something that has to be checked. I have one of those, and I check my meter at least a couple of times a week.
Yeah, this is his request.
So, what's the staff recommendation?
While he's looking to, he's willing to pay the water charge, he wants to abate the sewer charge on this. We could table it for now because the collector's not in. I don't know what the past sewer ballot bills were compared to what this one is. He just came in and gave his overall bill where he wanted to abate back to his old bill. So, we could table it, wait till I get the information from the tax collector. To see what the difference is between the sewer... Well, if we're going to do that, we're creating a precedence, and that's, I brought that up a long time ago, and that's what we said.
Did we abate the sewer in previous instances like this?
Only, only for pools, things that we can prove that the water went to a specific item.
Yeah, I mean, the pool policy is pretty straightforward, how they have to do it. I don't have an answer to that. I don't know.
No, they did that in the past.
I propose then, we, let's table it, and then, and you'll find out what the sewer issue cost, amount was. And then, two, how about confirming past practice with respect to abatement of the sewer?
I'm not sure if we ever did. I think we may have, because basically we're saying, they're not using the sewer line. It's, to me, that's no different whether the water is running in somebody's barn, field, it isn't going down the sewer line. There is no difference between that or a pool, as far as I'm concerned.
So, we'll, we'll come back to that one, but let's see how we've handled it. So, at least we're consistent. We don't...
Okay. Jeff, I'd like to bring up an item here. Key has asked for a three-day vacation to be carried over for planned vacation in September. I'd like to move that we grant the three-day vacation.
Who?
Key.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill Young's retiring, 15 July. What are we doing for him?
How are we doing on that? I gave a suggestion, maybe we have a catered breakfast or something in the town hall here. I think Jan responded to that. I don't know, Jeff, if you saw that?
I just care we do.
She did something for him, and I mean, for his 15 years or more of service.
Looking shortly on it.
So, will you handle that?
Yes.
Okay.
Let us know what, so we can do whatever's right. Solid Waste Management District?
Yes. We, as I said, this is for the sludge hauling and disposal, the memorandum. Ed said he had a couple of questions or a question.
This is the memorandum of understanding between Franklin County Solid Waste Management District and Town of Hatfield regarding hauling disposal of sludge.
I got two here. I thought it was last year's and this year's for a comp, to do a comp on it, but I got two of the same.
You got two copies, that's all.
My, my question here is, how does this compare with last year's rates and stuff? Because I do know, two years ago, we increased the rate for sludge because it was costing us extra money.
It's something we're going to have to look at, because as you can see by their cover letter, it says because of the limited disposal facilities in Massachusetts, the costs have increased from hauling.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at the annual costs, we're looking at the hourly rate costs if it goes over.
So, now, so now we can take, now we can take and see how much we, that we hauled last year, with, now that we have this schedule of their pricing.
I know, how much per gallon it did cost us last year.
And we can always, I'll come back to the board with a recommendation if we increase the septic hours.
Okay. Because that was one of the things when we pump out septic tanks, all right?
Yeah.
That's based on how much we charge to pump the septic tank out, because a lot of the solids, it's hard to tell, but they can tell if there's four or five inches. The normal is three to four inches of sludge that's in your tank. And if there's more than that, then you get charged, you know, accordingly. We have to rate, everybody gets charged for it. Okay, we don't have a rate for that. We just charge the top, and everybody pays.
But to keep the agreement open, it has to be signed by the select board and voted on.
But we want to make sure that we're, we're charging the right amount here.
Okay, so, then is there a motion to approve memorandum of understanding between Franklin County Solid Waste and Town of Hatfield regarding hauling and disposal of sludge?
I'll move that we approve that this Hampshire Franklin Solid Waste Management District memorandum.
Second.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Key has the originals to sign in this signature pack.
Well, we have several things here to sign in the package. Do you have anything else?
What would be helpful is if we have a contract like this, to staple last year's with it, so we can see exactly what the comps are. I mean, if there's no change, just don't worry about it. Just let us know there's no change.
Well, I know there's change because they have to bring...
I'd like to see...
Top of Blackstone now, so...
See what, what the last year's was.
Paul?
I'd like to change the order here and get to the town hall garage renovations and ask Mark Gillett to come up. Who's been sitting there patiently for some time now.
Hi, Mark. So, as you know, we have put the, the garage project, you know, out for bid, and we have a low bidder. We have who is Evergreen Construction out of Springfield. We, I think Mark is recommending that they, that the, the contract be awarded to Evergreen Construction. We have contracts there for signatures, and I'd like to turn it over to Mark at this point.
Yeah, the, I don't know if you've been updated on the project officially, but we did receive seven general bids, so it was a good bidding number. The bids came in, I have to say, reasonably low, under budget from what we were anticipating. So, the, the bid, the low bid was $421,000. When you add in the alternates, there were three alternates for the project. Those were some rubber tile flooring in the police department, some added insulation in the project, and some legs or steel legs for the emergency generator to raise it up off the ground. The total project cost came to 437. So, we went from 421 to 437 with the alternates. And those are included, I believe, in the, in the contract cost and in the contract work proposal.
Mark, how, how much, did this change very much from when I talked with you on this whole project?
I mean, the scope, I mean, the plan has really not changed very much.
Plan, the footprint is still there with the exception of tying the building together and any outside bathroom, is that correct?
Right.
So, we went to the alternative, the inside bathroom, two bathrooms?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, as far as rooms, everything stayed the same?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I don't want anybody hollering, and I told...
Paul has had folks in again, looking over everything just before.
Well, I instructed Billy to, the fire chief to come down and look these plans over to make sure everything was there before we signed everything. I just wanted to make sure everything was there.
Right. Yeah, we, myself and Paul and Phil have had numerous meetings with the, with the police chief and with the fire department. So, I think they were apprised, there were some, you know, between January of this year and the time it went out to bid, there were some minor changes in the plans, and they were all apprised of those changes. At, at one point, we had to drop out the additional bathroom on the outside because of cost reasons.
Right. You mentioned that additional insulation. I'm just curious why additional insulation, because it just, I thought the building that was put up was totally to the stretch code. Is this in the old part of the building we're talking about?
The old part of the building, the 1995 building, has attic insulation in it, and I'm not even sure how thick it is, but it's probably more like seven inches of cellulose insulation in that attic. So, we're adding to that.
Then that's what it is, okay.
Yes.
Okay, reasonable.
Any other questions?
No, let's get going.
Most thing to happen since last year about this time.
Motion to approve, award the contract for the town hall garage to Evergreen?
I'll move, okay, I'll move that we approve the, award the contract to Evergreen.
One second.
Any other discussion or...
Yeah, one more discussion. In here, Mark, is there a timeframe when they have to get this thing done by?
At this point, it's only 150 calendar days, so we do not have a, an exact time to begin the project. But it says in the specifications that that time would be according to a notice to proceed document. So, right now, we proposed to Evergreen to start the project in mid-July, but I haven't received confirmation that they can gear up and start at that time.
Yeah, actually, I, I talked to Evergreen yesterday. They dropped the, the contract documents off, and she told me it would probably be more like towards the end of July. She said it may be sooner, but we don't want to, we don't want to promise that, you know, at this stage of the game. So, we're looking at starting at the end of July. So, once the contracts are signed, Mark can prepare the notice to proceed, and we can get going.
Okay, is there, on the end of 150 days, if they're not done, if on completion, is there some kind of a...
There are no liquidated damages in the contract right now. And our, our attorney, you know, the town attorney also looked at the contract. At this point, we haven't proposed any liquidated damages.
To me, if, you know, I mean, it could go on for two years, if you're not careful.
They are, they are liable for certain costs associated with delay, though there's no, you know, liquidated damages.
Right, right. I mean, liquidated damages have pluses and minuses in terms of, you know, whether or not they're actually effective.
I guess what I'm...
Whether or not you can afford, enforce them or not.
Like a performance bond that they completed a project?
They do have performance bond.
There isn't, okay.
You don't have a performance bond on a project.
And that there's, after the 150 days, sometimes they'll put in, there's a fine of $100 per day. And then what that does is it forces them to go into overtime and get the job done, you know?
Sometimes it does. I mean, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes they will argue with you that, you know, that they were mitigating circumstances or change orders or project delays that were beyond their control, so...
Unforeseen conditions.
Clerk of the Works in here, or what's the status on that?
There's no clerk of the Works in this project.
There's no clerk of the Works?
No.
So, you guys oversee the project?
I mean, as an architect, I do typical construction administration phase. I wouldn't call it oversight of the project, but I have a presence at the site. I'll do weekly job meetings and take minutes, and I'll keep both Paul and Phil apprised of how the project is going. I presume one of them will be attending those weekly job meetings as well.
One, if not both.
We did discuss the issue of clerk of the Works, and it was decided that clerk of the Works was not necessary on this project.
Okay. Okay, and how about organizing? The ambulance has to be in a separate space and so on, so as far as the project getting completed in certain stages, I mean, we certainly, if we put the ambulance over and where the, the garage is going to be, then it needs to be in place before winter. So, there's certain things that... So there's certain things that gotta be done in that area to protect that ambulance from, you know, things in there from freezing and so on.
Right, right, and, um, so I think that, yeah, that the contract finish date, uh, is an important date and I think, um, that's one of the things that probably needs to be coordinated in terms of, uh, you know, when the freezing weather comes around and how we deal with that. So it's a good point.
Whether the work goes in, because I, I mean, there's very little work that's gonna be done with the ambulance, is if I recall.
I mean, where the ambulance is now, um, very little work in there.
No, into the other bay where the ambulance is moving.
And three bays?
Yeah.
No work done in there, except for a, a little bit of lighting.
Okay, so that, as long as that's prepared and done, then the ambulance can move in there and we'll, we'll have heat and air.
In the, you mean, in the?
Into the new area.
Into the new area, right, correct, yeah.
You're talking about the, what is now the police bay?
The police bay, right.
The police bay will have a heater in it, yes.
It already does have a heater.
Yeah.
I mean, unless they disconnect the gas line.
The old police bay.
The old police bay, the old police bay.
You have the ambulance here and then the police bay here where the cruiser is. So then we're moving the ambulance from where it is today next door.
Right.
Into the old building, it's in the old building.
Right, right.
But we just wanna make sure that's, that unit is done so the ambulance can be put back in in cold weather.
Right, right. Well, well, that's something that we'll have to stress and make sure, yep. I think that there'll be heat in the building.
Long before.
Before we, uh, get to the final completion date.
I just don't wanna have to start looking for a place to put the ambulance afterwards, that's all.
Right, yeah. Well, that's a good point, I'll make sure that that's stressed.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll need your.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Uh, three copies here.
And I don't need to be present for it.
No, thank you very much, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. I'll sign right at the end.
Let's put them up here in the signature stuff.
Yep. Um, we skipped sidewalk repair.
We're, we're.
Oh, yeah.
Have we ever found out, well, I guess, I guess it's part of the state budget, which is not finalized. What, remember Representative Kokot did the three things in the transportation bond bill? Earmark the, the bridge, the.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks and guardrails. And I never knew how that.
Haven't heard anything.
Washed out. You'd mentioned guard, sidewalks and I, and I agree, it's, we're at the point where we need to do some of these things, simply as a matter of public safety. If we're gonna have the sidewalk, it needs to be so that senior people don't slip, trip and fall when they walk down because of roots or whatever, but, so. Yeah, I was just trying to find out where, where we were on, on that because I know this year, right now, we're operating with less Chapter 90 money, so we're not gonna be putting it in there. So we, we just don't know yet.
We don't, I haven't heard anything about that.
Can you call, can you call Representative Nag, I mean, uh, Kokot's office and find out?
Be in the final vote.
Where they stand, you know? Just give them a call and talk, find out where the heck they're at. You know? I haven't seen them to talk to, so he must be busy with the budgets and stuff.
Well, in any event, say it doesn't come this time, maybe we oughta put it in the capital plan for next year to do some of the worst, some of the worst parts.
Even if it's part.
Yeah, just some of the, the dangerous places.
Absolutely.
You know, it'd be a nice article if this doesn't pass to have a sidewalk repair article.
No, it's not repair, it's replacement.
Wow, replace.
Whatever, it just, all right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
All right, shall I, shall I continue?
Town Hall Garage, right?
We're done with the town hall garage?
No, okay, and then we're town hall renovations.
Town Hall renovations, um, you know, that project has been put out to bid, we have a low bidder, Maroy Construction from South Hadley. The architect and I will be meeting with them in a couple of weeks. You know, we're, we're, um, just beginning to, you know, uh, look at preparing the, um, construction contract documents, so, um, perhaps by the next meeting that will be ready. So that project is, um, um, you know, pretty much on target. And I'll, I'll have more to, uh, we had, what, seven, seven, um, no, six, six general contractors bid on it and, uh, and the, the, the three lowest ones are actually all pretty clustered tightly together, so that's a good sign that, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at, at a realistic number. So, um, that project, you know, will be, I would anticipate that we're probably looking at August, uh, for that project to start up at this, at this point, maybe sooner.
Well, let's talk about that, let's, just for folks, uh, we're talking about the town hall Phase 1 renovation and, and it is in phases, as we pointed out at, at town meeting. And the Phase 1 renovation, because of the extent of square footage impacted and the cost, i.e. above 30% of the assessed value of the building, triggers a variety of compliance requirements, among them ADA, Americans with Disability Act requirements. What we've done is submitted to the state a request for variance on the, completing all the ADA requirements immediately, but rather requesting approval of variance to proceed with the Phase 1, which is essentially the, the main floor renovations, with a commitment that we'd come back over a period of years to do the other, you know, fulfill the other requirements, uh, other ADA requirements. So right now, we're scheduled for a 12 August hearing on this. I'd like to talk about who's, who's gonna be doing what at that 12 August hearing and, and who among us is going to be there?
She's down in Boston.
That's correct.
Well, Kevin Shea, uh, the architect, will pretty much be doing all the talking. I'm planning on going, um.
I think both you guys should be going.
I'll be on vacation.
So, you know, I talked to Kevin about it, I said, should I plan on, on going down? He said, well, certainly not necessary, but, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea. It's not a bad idea to have, you know, um, you know, someone, uh, from the town there. I don't anticipate that I will be, uh, contributing very much. I, actually, I, you know, I'm just curious for my, you know, own benefit and, and just figure that it, you know, I'd like to be able to directly report back to the board, you know, what happened.
I think one of the board members ought to go, I'll go, I don't know if anyone else is interested in going, just, just, uh, not to be a potted plant necessarily, but just to show that, you know, this is something important to the Towne Hadfield and, and we care and we, we want this blessed and it's not just the architect that, that's here, but.
I think that was August, right, Jan?
12, 12 August. I don't know if anyone, anyone else wants to, 12, 12 August at 2:00 PM, it's somewhere in Boston, I don't even know where, but.
Ashcombe Square.
I don't know, I, I have never been through one of these, I don't know what the expectations are. It would seem Kevin's covered about everything last time around.
Yeah, well, um, Kevin's been in front of the Architectural Access Board in Boston, well, let's put it this way, he's in front of them on a regular basis. He's in front of them all the time, so.
Well, as I read it, the key criteria on, one, the burden of proof is on us to demonstrate that compliance with, for example, all the ADA requirements is technologically infeasible and/or the cost of compliance is excessive without substantial benefit to a person with a disability. Those are the two tests that our presentation are gonna have to satisfy. I, I don't know how you can say it's not technologically infeasible, I mean, it's.
Well, I think that, you know, what, what we will essentially, we, we will be asking essentially for a, a delay in compliance. We're not, we, we're not asking for, you know, a complete waiver from never, uh.
So we're, actually, we're creating a third thing here, it's neither the above, but rather just give us more time to do this.
Exactly, exactly. And they'll, they will, the, they'll put us on a schedule.
Yeah.
But, yeah, my last conversation with Kevin.
And just for the, for the board members, the submission, uh, says, well, in, for the Phase 2, talks about, well, in five years, we'd commit to doing certain things, in seven years, we'd commit to doing a few more, and in 10 years, a few more things, so.
Providing it's voted at town meeting.
Well, yeah, yeah.
We can bring it forward and that's our job, but if it's not voted on, then we don't really know about it.
Well, we can be directed to comply.
But my last conversation with Kevin, he, he was just, uh, in front of the AAB the previous day, but he said they're very, you know.
Reasonable?
They're very reasonable people, yeah.
I didn't know if they're.
Yeah, he says he, he's never really had a, had a problem with them.
I'd like to back up a little bit about the contractor, okay, and I'd like to discuss that so you guys know what's happening also. The contractor that got the bid, he was the lowest bid on there. Also, I've seen some of the performance that's happening and one of the jobs is in Northampton, he'd been working on for almost six, seven months now or more.
I'm sorry, which, which contractor are we talking?
This is the one Maury that is a little bitter.
From South Hadley?
My concern is that if it takes that long to put up a little building in Northampton there, how, what's gonna happen in Towne Hadfield here? And can he do the work? And is it wise to take the lowest bidder? There's some answers that he's gonna have to give before I sign a contract with him, okay? Because if he can't perform and get the job done, then he's not the contractor that we want to have do the job.
Well, if we don't, if, if we're going to raise an issue, we have an obligation to raise it with the contractor and let them, and you put it in writing and let them respond.
That's, that's what I wanna do, I, I just wanna bring it to everybody's attention that there is stuff going on out there that, you know, that is happening and I'm waving a flag that I just don't want it to happen in our town hall. Okay, that's what my concern is, so. And you can bring it back to the architect and let him know what the concerns are, my concerns are.
Yeah, yeah.
And if the architect wants to bring the low bidders in or the low bidder in to our meeting.
Oh, we, just do it in writing, put it, put it, put it in writing, what, what the issue is and let them respond.
Okay, performance is a big thing, okay?
I, I, I don't know, you know, what, what their issues, what, what issues you have with that particular contract.
I don't have any issues with the contractor, other than knowing what jobs that he's doing and they're not getting done and, and maybe it's a legitimate reason on that end, but it doesn't look good on my end. And if I'm the one that's gonna say that they're gonna, you know, I'm gonna sign my name to something that he's gonna do in Towne Hadfield, um, he better perform the way it's supposed to be performed, otherwise I'd go on to the next bidder.
Okay, well, again, uh, I'd suggest you just document what you think the issues are and we can give them an opportunity to, to respond. Highway Garage Roof, is that what we're doing?
Uh, yes, we had the bid opening for the Highway Garage Roof project, um, last week. The apparent low bidder is, uh, T. Loose Construction at $32,300. We actually had 11 bidders altogether, which is, um, which is pretty, pretty darn good. And, yeah, they range from the $32,300 for T. Loose Construction all the way up to $114,200 Rockwell Roofing. So, uh, T. Loose Construction is the apparent low bidder. I've talked to them and told them that, that I need references, I need a payment bond and I need certificates of insurance. I haven't gotten any of that information from them yet. So, at, T. Loose is the apparent low bidder, we'll, we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay, great. Anything else?
I just wanna let you know, is that something we have to sign a contract with or not, Paul?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But I mean, Phil, if, I can't sign that contract.
You'll have to totally abstain.
I have to abstain and I've got to file with the town clerk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, it's their motion to approve ambulance abatement in the amount of $4,532.83 for the month of May. Or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we already acted on Key's request. Uh, we had in here the package, there's a failure to elect a member to a five-year term on the Hadfield Redevelopment Authority.
You have to find somebody that's interested first.
Well, I've gone back to the two people who were tied and have not heard, one didn't answer an email, one didn't answer a telephone call, so we'll, we'll give them an opportunity to say yes or no, but meanwhile, if anyone's interested, uh, please contact the town administrator to express your interest in, or consideration, uh, for appointment to the Hadfield Redevelopment Authority. It's a five-year term. We have, uh, we are, we, we've changed the September schedule to four, Sep, four September, okay, just as a schedule change. And we have 11 July session with.
At 7 o'clock at night?
Six or seven. 6:30.
6:30?
We have, we have a meeting on the 9th of July. And then, uh, session with the finance committee at 6:30 on the 11th of July. So the 9th of July, we oughta have finalized.
I would think so, yeah. We'll have final numbers.
6:30.
And then on, uh, just one change, we made, we made that change in September for, for a meeting on Wednesday, the 4th, at 9 o'clock in the morning.
On, what's the date of that?
4th of September.
4th of September, right.
Those are the only scheduled. Any other old business?
Yeah, we'll go ahead.
Go ahead, Jan, I was just gonna talk a little bit more about, I think we should, we should file, I, or should we, we should have another meeting sometime within the next couple of weeks.
We, we do, we do have a, we do. Uh, our meetings right now are scheduled for 9 July, 11 July, and 23 July.
Okay, but, oh, 9 July is, is an off-camera, that's right.
9 July, 11 July and 23 July. And then in August, the, I guess it's the 13th, it's Tuesday, the 13th and Tuesday, the, is it 27th? Is that a Tuesday?
I think we were going with every second.
Actually, actually, the 9th of July would be an on-camera one, right? I mean, if we got some personal things that we wanna talk about.
We can, we can break, we can.
Okay. Old business, I got one other old business thing. Credit cards. Paul gave Greg, I mean, uh, yeah, Greg a request that I, I asked Paul to. that I asked Paul to get our credit cards. Well, we've been after a credit card for now for, I don't know how long. And it's still, and I meant to ask Greg, and I totally forgot at that point. So I don't know where we're standing.
I'll talk to him today about it.
I just wanna get that thing done. There's no reason to drag your feet. It's just a simple application. And if we're gonna go through the bank that we do business with, that's one thing. If we're gonna go to another institution, then that's a whole nother situation. My recommendation is if we can't get a good rate, okay, or we don't really need a rate because we're paid every month, then go with somebody that gives you points like Capital One. They give you air mileage, well, no, what that does is-
For a meeting in Hawaii in February?
No, it builds up. My thinking is, just like the guys went to Florida for the fire truck.
Yeah.
You get something like that, it's a free trip. So why not use that kind of a situation?
I had a conversation with the treasurer about this, who's quite familiar with it all. Yeah, those, for those kinds of deals, they are available to the entire town. You would have to set up a raffle system.
What are you talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, not just any Joe Blow can, you know, or a member of the Board of Selectmen or whatever can use those.
Makes sense.
Use those miles.
So you can't use it for-
Anybody, anybody in the town.
No, but he's not saying it. He's, he's saying-
It's a benefit to the town, basically. It's a benefit to the town, exactly.
But he's saying it could be used for town business.
That's all I'm saying, is it should be used for town business.
No, I'm talking about the, you know, the free flyer miles, that kind of stuff. That's available, that would have to be available.
Then keep it clean, just go with a credit card, that's all we wanna do. I don't wanna compliment matters.
Yeah.
You know, it's complicate matters and let's just get the credit card on board, that's all I'm looking for. I mean, we're not kids, we understand that we have control of it, that's the bottom line.
It's not for someone else to worry about, that's, you're right.
I'm just tired of putting this thing off and off and off. This is the kind of thing that gets me. I mean, we could do transponders on that credit card for driving to Boston and back, you know, with the statement, with the vehicles and stuff. Instead, the guy's gotta bring money with him and we gotta pay it. That's ridiculous, okay? There's certain benefits that this has, and that's what we should be taking a look at. We shouldn't be asking people to put money out of their own pocket to pay these tolls and stuff like that. This is ridiculous. This is not running a business when you're doing stuff like that. So can we expedite this? Maybe by next meeting, we'll have an application in, Paul?
I will talk to Greg and see where we-
Excuse me, but what is? How, I mean, is a town treasurer trying to say no?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, just on a sky miles, I guess, Green. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You know, I'll- It comes out of a credit card that benefits a person.
We're not asking permission.
No, I'll be honest with you, he's not wild about the idea, but he's gonna do it.
I know there are control issues, but that's our, that's our problem.
Yeah.
We're not kids, and I don't care what he thinks.
I don't think, you know, I-
We're trying to be-
Let's just go forward on it and let's get it. I mean, we voted for, we voted back months ago that we were going that route, and it should've been done by now, but, so let's get it done.
Well, it sounds like he's just trying to help us do it right, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay. But we just need to speed it up.
Okay.
Is there any other old business?
Yeah. Last meeting, we discussed the possibility of having to put a sleeve under 91 instead of going over the bridge. I mean, I thought about this. I don't know how the rest of the board and Phil would think about it, but... What if we talked to Mass Works? I mean, they haven't given us a dime for this project. And if not, they're just making it a little worse for us by shutting the bridge down, which is raising our cost, to tunnel under 91 if they can at least pay the difference. I'm serious. I, I can't see, number one, I think if you look way, way back when they did that 91 project, the reason they put those bays in there was because they were cutting all these towns and cities in half. So in order to get their water lines through, that's what those bays were supposed to be for. It isn't my problem, or this town's problem, that they can't maintain their bridges. I don't care.
That's why I said, let's run it right over the top, right on the sidewalk.
But I'd personally rather see it under 91, it's a better, to me, it's a little more solid than a bridge. But have them pay the added cost, or see what we can do with it.
Okay, well-
Go get a hold of Mike Oles and see what-
Couple things, though. One, we need, I'd like to see us, I hope we all agree to go with another Mass Works application, number one. But remember, the funds are awarded under Mass Works for economic development.
Right, but I thought a portion of them was, I mean, I mean, we gotta plead a case here somehow.
Yeah, well, that's, that's-
Again, they're making it worse for us and, you know-
They drove the cost of the project up, there's no doubt about that.
So why not go after, after a grant? And just explain, hey, okay, yeah, you're throwing it at us to do this project on our own, but yet you're turning around and you're denying us access to a bridge, but yet we're being charged more now to bore under 91, to sleeve under 91. Where's the justice in this state?
Let it come from the state. Let it come from the state's emergency fund.
Why don't you run for office, there's a lecture going on.
I know I am, I'm gonna go up there and vote here pretty soon.
Maybe it's, we look at either Mike Oles, or we get in touch with Stan Rosenberg or somebody and let it come from the state's emergency fund.
Well, I mean, just, you know-
It's their bridge, and they're telling us we can't do this because it's not safe? Well, then let them get their butt in gear and get it fixed.
We even came back and said, well, suspend it on the other side of the bridge until you fix your bridge, and they denied that, so.
So let's put it on top of the bridge?
Realistically, we've cut the project into two phases now because of that. You know, I mean, that was supposed to be one project going all the way through, and now we have to end it there until we decide.
Putting it on top of the sidewalk?
They won't even let you put it on the other end of the bridge.
That's what the big issue is, the weight.
What's the difference, 10 tractor trailers going across their bridge, or, you know?
Well, I mean, I'll have that discussion with Mike, he's coming in next week anyway, so.
Okay. That's all I have.
And when I have-
Anything else?
Representative Kocot on the phone, I'll mention that, too.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
So moved, or you did? Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.